I will call. I will call the June thirteenth regular meeting of the Springfield Economic Development Agency to order with roll call, please.
Board member Van Gordon.
Here.
Board member Pitts.
Here.
Board member Mo.
Here.
Board member Rodley.
Here.
Board member Stare.
Here.
Chair Woodrow.
Here.
Board member Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
And board member Bernie.
I'm here, thank you.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There will be two times designated for public testimony this evening and will be listed as public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised their virtual hand. First item, please.
Chair, the first item is a resolution under the consent calendar.
Resolution authorizing the city manager for work contracts. Do we have anybody to discuss, to mention this or discuss this first? Do I hear a motion to?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Again. It's been moved and seconded. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, board member Van Gordon.
Yes.
Board member Pitts.
Aye.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Board member Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Stare.
Aye.
Chair Woodrow.
Yes.
Board member Pictionary.
Aye, thank you.
And board member Bernie.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Next item.
Next item is business from the audience. We have no cards, Chair Woodrow, and we'll just wait to see if any hands go up for business. Chair Woodrow, it doesn't appear we have any hands for business under the, business from the audience.
Okay, next item, please.
Uh, next item, you have two public hearings this evening. Uh, public hearing number one is a supplemental budget resolution to resolution number two, a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. CETA Glenwood General Fund and CETA Downtown General Fund and authorizing the transfer of appropriations within the CETA Glenwood General Fund from operating expense to capital project expense. Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, board members. This is the final supplemental budget of FY twenty-two. Uh, the specific, uh, proposed changes are described in exhibit A of, uh, the resolution. So I won't dive into the specifics unless you have any questions, uh, and I'm happy to do so. Um, the staff tonight request that you, uh, hold a public hearing and then, um, approve the attached resolution. Um, that's, it's all I've got, so, um, unless there are questions, um, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Where's exhibit A at?
Exhibit A, um, should be following the, um, pulling up the list of items here.
Uh, board member Mo, that would be exhibit A is page one of twelve. It is right after the resolution in your packet.
So, is it attachment one?
Exhibit A, yes, that'd be the, um, you have a supplemental budget to resolution and then the next page is exhibit A.
Really hard to figure out. Okay. There it is. Tell me, tell me what we're doing now.
So, so in, uh, in the CETA Glenwood General Fund, uh, the summary here is that, uh, the staff propose, uh, recognizing some additional property tax revenue along with, uh, transferring forty-five thousand from, uh, materials and services appropriations to capital project expense, uh, to allow for earnest money associated with, uh, property transactions that are occurring in Glenwood. And then in the downtown general fund, um, it looks like we have forty, approximately forty-five thousand in carry forward uh, of unspent funds from FY twenty-one, um, that proposed to carry forward FY twenty-two associated with uh, supporting the Blue McKenzie Project. And then additionally seventy-six, roughly seventy-six thousand, uh, carry forward of unspent funds from twenty-one uh, related to, um, the, uh, basically, uh, helping to support evaluation of a potential development project in the downtown.
Now, I have a question. One of these sheets talks about Glenwood Master Plan Consultant for three to four hundred thousand dollars. Where does that work it, work into this picture?
So that is related to the consent calendar item, um, which, uh, relates to the potential for, um, an approval of, uh, uh, potential for contracts over the summer recess.
In other words, we already approved it, the consent counter, did we?
So, um, that's correct, yeah. So the consent calendar item approved the ability for the city, uh, manager in this case to to sign, uh, contracts over recess. Um, and this is, uh, the only item that, uh, staff anticipate, uh, potentially needing to be executed over, over the summer.
Well, I want to know what the Glenwood Master Plan Consultant three to four hundred thousand dollars is about. Maybe it's too late, but.
Well, um, I, I think, uh, there are others that may have more detail and background on that particular, um, potential contract than I do. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to, to gather more detail or, or perhaps there's somebody else on the call that, that may have some additional background.
Do we have anybody?
I'm happy to answer that question if, um.
It's fine. Go ahead, Christine. I was gonna jump in there. That's, that's fine, too. Go ahead.
Okay, um, the, um, our, the RFP for a master plan would be the next phase in Glenwood. Um, the Glenwood development, so you conducted the RFQ for a developer. So the next phase in work to see development would be the, 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 I don't want to use development too many times, but, uh, starting to work on the master plan, which is the planning document that would see that would set down sort of the land uses and, and infrastructure needed to develop, um, Glenwood. This would not be for someone who would, this would be for the planning consultant who would assist sort of all of the parties working together to prepare that document and the land use findings and information needed to do that master planning process. So, um, the developers of the, the CETA board selected through the RFQ would continue to be sort of the subject matter experts on what development look like, looks like. But the city doesn't have the planning resources next necessary to do the planning work in house to take it through the next phase of land use. So it would be an outside planning expert essentially.
Mayor Sean.
If I could offer a suggestion before we get into a giant conversation about, uh, about the Glenwood, about, about this consultant. I know Steve wants to talk about it, but maybe we could get to the budget public hearing first and then, then we can.
I don't mind putting it off because I, but, but I do want to talk about it and we've approved it apparently. I did not. This is very confusing document, but anyway, we can go ahead, but I do want to know what the heck's going on.
Yeah, could, maybe we could come back to it under new business once we get through the rest of all of the public hearings.
Okay, thanks, Sean. So we were at opening the public hearing. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Let's see.
Uh, Chair, we have no cards and we're waiting for any hands that might go up on this item. Not seeing any at this time, Chair.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt or not adopt resolution number two.
I moved, we moved, we adopt resolution number two.
Right up. Uh, we found a motion and seconded. We have a vote, please.
Board member Van Gordon.
Yes.
Board member Pitts.
Aye.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Board member Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Stare.
Aye.
Chair Woodrow.
Yes.
Board member Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
And board member Bernie.
Yes.
The unanimous, uh, vote and, uh, we, next item, please.
Chair, the next item is your public hearing number two fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. CETA budget adoption. Nathan Bell is here for the staff report.
Uh, good evening, uh, CETA board members. Uh, back on May tenth, the CETA Budget Committee, uh, met to, uh, consider and recommend a budget to the, uh, CETA board. Uh, the resolution and exhibit in front of you this evening is such, uh, budget. And staff's request tonight is to conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-three CETA budget as approved by the Budget Committee uh, and adopt, not adopt, uh, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-three CETA budget. Making appropriations and directing the, the division of property tax. Uh, any questions for me?
I don't see any questions, so I will open the public hearing.
Chair Woodrow, we have no cards on this item. We'll give a moment in case anyone wants to raise their hand. Not seeing any hands at this time.
Then I'll close the public hearing and ask, do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Springfield Economic Development Agency budget.
Second. Moved and seconded and we, maybe we have a vote, please.
Yes, board member Van Gordon.
Yes.
Board member Pitts.
Aye.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Board member Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Stare.
Aye.
Chair Woodrow.
Yes.
Board member Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Board member Bernie.
Yes.
Unanimous vote and it, the next item.
Next item is the first new business item and this is the Blue McKenzie Project update and we have several staff members here, uh, but I'll kick us off. Um, so thank you for your time tonight. We'll be joined by Nathan Bell, our finance director, uh, Christina Kraz is here, our assistant city attorney. And Courtney Griesel is joining us. Um, as you know, we have retained her as a consultant to help us through the Blue McKenzie Project. So the CETA board authorized, uh, in twenty twenty-one the issuance of two million dollars in land acquisition and pre-development loan to Blue McKenzie LLC for the support of a downtown mixed-use market rate project referred to as Blue McKenzie. The project goals, as you remember, was to, are to create a proof of concept, communicate viability and profitability of a new construction type and height in Springfield. We currently do not have this type of construction. Provide a market rate high-density housing project to serve as comparables to financial institutions. Uh, approving similar projects and create a dense development in downtown that spurs subsequent private taxable development and housing. Uh, you have a, what we think is a pretty detailed, uh, board briefing memorandum, that memorandum, um, we will review tonight and answer your questions again as part of your update. Um, if you don't have any questions, I'll turn, uh, this item over to Courtney Griesel, uh, to lead the presentation.
Do we have any questions? Courtney, please.
Good evening. Uh, happy to see everyone, happy to provide an update. So, uh, Neil covered the goals of the project, so I won't dive back into them too much, but just that reminder, exactly what he said. Um, Blue, Blue McKenzie Projects located on Seventh, uh, and A. The corner, we've referred to it as the Shear Project, Buick Site. Um, at this point, you are still talking about an eight-story mixed-use market rate project, mass timber construction type. Um, and it is kind of critical that while we do that work supporting the affordable housing and incenting it as a city in CETA, this is one of those cases where we're trying to balance the market with supply and demand work, um, at market rate. So we'll talk a bit about, we wanted to give you an update, a status update on the project. Look at the loan, uh, spend down of the loan and progress of the work so far. And then share a little bit of how that progress is working in alignment with current market conditions and how that's leading us to some next steps on the project. Um, yeah, so Neil touched a bit on the goals. Um, in your packet, we've provided you some high-level market information that's really based on some of the commodities that we're watching. We're also watching interest rates. But one of the key takeaways is that we're watching closely spending of the project and progress. And right now, uh, the loan itself, uh, two million dollar loan is, um, spent at about one point five million of that. So what's important to note on that is that four hundred and, uh, twenty-four thousand of that, those funds expended actually went directly to property purchase. So property is secured and then the remaining, uh, just over one point five is slated for the design phases of the project. Um, as of right now, in your packet, you see on page two of attachment one. This is also, if you're reading in a PDF, it's page sixteen of the PDF. Um, you can kind of see we've, we've lined out progress both of the loan expenditures as well as percent task complete. And we've made a point to line those out in such a way that the spending on the land doesn't kind of skew the actual spending of, uh, and design work. So at the moment, we, we really are right on task. Theoretically, we're, we're a little bit ahead in some of the phases from design. Um, so you'll see, for example, that, um, design development or what's sometimes referred to as DD is about hundred percent. Um, but from a loan standpoint, that, that that design estimate actually came in slightly under. Those funds are then used for other phases of the loan to just sort of make sure that we're fitting the needs of the project. One of the elements that's been key to us, we under contract have eighteen months to expend the loan. But the market conditions have been, um, somewhat unpredictable. Um, it's an understatement. I think everyone is sort of watching, uh, inflationary trends, interest trends. And, um, you know, we're watching very closely because we're seeing jumps of hundreds of percents, you know, so when we're noticing that we're four hundred percent above costs from two years ago, that's key signal to us that now may not be the correct time to bid a project. Um, so the project on, on par for its timing did, um, go out for construction, preliminary construction estimates at the very beginning of this year. What we were noticing in that time is that we were actually trending upwards on another market, um, spike. And so you're seeing one example of that in a commodities market, a lumber pricing. And you're, we're showing you sort of that, that five-year trend, so you see where we're spiking and dropping back down. And we, at the time, were starting to climb again, um, to what ended up peaking in about March. Um, it was determined at that time that this would not be favorable to actually take a project out to bid. Um, it's best to sort of wait for things to calm and normalize and, and demand to come down for some of those materials. So we then, um, continued to move forward on some of the permitting documents. The developer determined to keep pushing into design and finishing out, um, working towards construction documentation and prepare for a future window of rebidding again when more favorable. So that's something that's currently being looked at and reinitiated. It does mean that we may find ourselves, um, slightly behind on the eighteen months. Because it will then be critical again to pair that construction window with, um, construction weather. Um, and also to kind of noting that while construction prices might come down, interest rates are moving, um, up, although we do look at that in context of where they've been, um, in the last ten years even. But it means that we have to be extra sensitive on elements like rent rates. And so, um, most regions are really struggling to understand what their current market is and what it will be left with as things balance. Um, as inflation has risen, so have rent costs. We need to understand how much of that will stay in place and remain consistent and stable, um, or if the increase will continue. And so one of the recommended next steps is actually to do a very Springfield-specific market assessment of what has happened over the last two years. How much of it will remain stable? How much growth will continue? And what that supply and demand will look like, um, as it starts to balance. We're also learning that this type of market estimate is becoming pretty typical for developers across the state. Um, as we talk with consultant economic, uh, economist firms looking at it, they're becoming accustomed to this ask. And that banks are also becoming pretty dependent on the information, um, to participate in projects. So as we move forward, our recommendation at this point, I mean, really, we're just providing this update. Uh, we'll probably come back after summer. We may request, it's likely that staff will request an amendment to the loan contract specific to time to just provide some flexibility that the developer can be responsive with banks in market conditions. Um, and we also believe at that time we may have some information back from, uh, a market assessment to really show us what the, um, commandable rent rates would be on the project and align that to costs. Um, I want to pause here and see if there's any questions, but also see if Ethan or Neil or others want to jump in on things I may have forgotten in the update.
You did a nice job.
Joe, Bernie.
Oh, Jerry, I saw your hand up, so I thought.
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna try and get all that clear, if I may, in sort of my simple terms. Um, we know inflation is increasing at a hell of a rate right now. We also know there's labor shortages. And so we're gonna spend more money on another assessment. It seems to me either we're gonna need to move forward and close something or not, and I, and I know I'm being too simplistic, so please.
Yeah, I think we're gonna spend a little bit of money, the developer and property owner are actually gonna cover half the cost. Um, we're looking at just over ten thousand for the full assessment. It is a little bit of money. But part of it's to build some confidence in a place where we're really trying to understand the right moment to go on the project. Um, and convince a bank that they want to participate as well.
So if I may.
Mm-hmm.
CETA is financing this because banks won't. Therefore, we're talking about demonstrating that something is financeable by traditional financial institutions. And yet now you're saying we need to wait, if I have this right, we need to wait until circumstances allow traditional banks to finance before we will? I, 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 I'm again confused. I thought the real justification for this, since it's not affordable housing, it's market rate housing, was to demonstrate to banks that they are alone on similar projects in Springfield.
Yeah. You, you're right. It's, it's a mix of both, but we also consider ourselves a bank to it as well. And so we want to make sure that we provide CETA with some informed information, especially because the project is increasing in cost. So as we understand what liability, it's an asset and a liability. And if we're lending on it, we are hooked to it. So we want to be real clear about this new version of the economy that we're anchoring to a project in. And it's different than the version that we looked at before, so uh, it's just kind of that due diligence.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Marilyn Leonard's got his hand up.
Leonard.
Uh, thanks, Marilyn, um, or Chair Woodrow. Um, yeah, I'm, I, I'm sharing, uh, in, uh, Agent Bernie's confusion. I was, I, it seems as though if we are convincing the bank that of the viability of the project and we're the bank, then we're convincing ourselves. I, I'm not sure that that's, you know, that, that's needed at this point. I mean, we bought in on the project. I'm not sure that this is a necessary phase. And I, um, I, I'm so, I, I'm, I'm gonna sort of tie this in later to this Glenwood project, but, um, I, I would, I would like to know about the necessity of this.
Mind if I step in, Courtney?
Yeah, I saw you come up, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, as Courtney mentioned, we also are, uh, the bank here. And right now, um, as we kind of, uh, develop the terms we're gonna have as it relates to, uh, our contribution to this project, uh, we haven't arrived at an interest rate. We're, it's something that is to be negotiated. Um, there's a difference between what we think, uh, rents will be, uh, in this market and what the developer thinks rents will be. And this all ties into the risk related to this project. So this is something we are splitting because we both have an interest and a difference in opinion. It's just part of the necessary step as we move along on a project like this. Um, I don't think it's really out of the, um, uh, usual. I see Christina's got her hand up.
Christina.
I also want to clarify in case it's not clear or it's not clear in the packet or memory, you know, this is sort of faded since we last talked about this. But we are providing, CETA is providing a loan essentially to meet the gap in funding for what a traditional bank lender will loan and where the market is at. And so there still is a private bank that is funding this project. We are not, we are acting as a bank, but we are not the only bank. And I think that's a very key piece of information um, that may have been overlooked. There is still, there is a private bank financing that will be the primary lender on this project lending more uh, money to the project very likely than CETA will be putting up, um, in a loan.
Joe.
How much is the private bank? If, forgive me, because I know we discussed this and brings it. How much is the private bank lending? Is that a first? Is CETA a guarantor of that? And how much is CETA lending and is that a second? Thank you.
Yeah, so CETA, and these are, it is in the terms, there is some of it, it's in the attachments, so we made sure to add those MOU terms in as well. But CETA is lending ten million on the project, so the private bank will absolutely be the majority lender. Um, we expect that to come in, um, in the twelve to seventeen, it really, this is where the gap of the cost is becoming critically important because the bank will play, will participate in that fluctuating area. Um, and so the bank will sit in first position per the terms that we, um, brought forward to the board. It is a loan that actually has some tiered, um, repayment and also interest payouts associated. So this assessment and the cost is critical to us because that's really where we come in and we refine our negotiations on exactly our loan terms to the project and how they relate to the bank.
Thank you very much.
And CETA is not guaranteeing the primary financing.
That was a, thank you very much.
Yeah, we, we will, we are second priority, which means if for some reason the property were to go into foreclosure on the primary loan, we would get, CETA would be paid back after the primary mortgage is paid off, but we would not be guaranteeing any payoff on that primary mortgage.
Or you might take it over. I understand what second means. Um, yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine. I get it, what you're saying. Darn it, I'm getting old. What was the other thing I was going to ask? Oh, which is, who's the private bank?
That's yet to be determined. There are several interested.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but they're, they're sort of in that same mode of waiting to see final construction estimates, which I think they were happy to not see them in January or February.
It's, last thing, Chair, thank you for your indulgence. It seems we're in an environment where private construction estimates in May will be different than construction estimates in June, which would be. So it's such a fluid environment. How do you deal with that?
Yeah, and, and you know, and there are also the developers expressing, you know, contractors are not willing to do guaranteed pricing or commit to contracts. Um, and so you really have to be sensitive to make sure you know what your buffers are, your margins are, because you, you will need them to absorb some fluctuation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think I saw the mayor wave way down there.
That's part of the fun about being in, in the room, right? You're gonna wave from a mile away. No, I don't have any questions. Um, I'm good here. I'm like, thank you so much for the update. I can't wait to get this thing done.
Yes. At what point would an MOU be made?
Hmm. I think we're really hoping, um, theoretically, it should be made here in the next couple of months, um, per, in the next six months, um, per some of our contract language. We are sort of working, we are working through that now. That's part of why we're looking for this information. Um, we would hope to have that coming back to you in the fall, but we need the construction estimating back and some of these numbers.
Any other questions? Do you need anything more from us or just, um, I'm. I, I, I'm with Sean, I appreciate very much the update and knowing where we're at and, and, and I'm looking, I'm looking forward to. This project as well.
Yeah, I'll look at Nathan and Neil to see if they. Appreciate y'all having me.
Thank you very much, good to see you, Courtney. Thanks, Courtney. I, I believe the next item would be a discussion on Glenwood that Steve was asking for.
Yes, Chair Woodrow, we can add to new business a discussion of the Glenwood Master Plan Consultant.
Merrily Nancy's raising her hand here.
Nancy, please.
Thank you, Chair Woodrow, this is one of the interesting moments of trying to have a hybrid meeting. And I'm trying to get your attention, realizing I'm waving at a screen. Looking a little awkward here in C Hall. Really, I, I want to do address Counselor Mo's question. This is really just a placeholder, a legal placeholder for us to be able to continue working on this project with the development team. We don't have a, a, a contract in place currently for master planning services. We would want to issue an RFP to find a, a, a firm team. What have you to, to do the master planning process, and it is, it could have an expensive tag attached with. So really, that price tag is really an order of magnitude estimate. I do not expect. Really having that fleshed out completely, we don't, there's not. Like a, a sample scope work and yet in place where we have a contractor identified. So it's kind of like you, you issue the RFP and then you get your selected consultant based on what they submit. And then we get a, a magnitude of cost. All of that is gonna take time, this is just in case over the summer, and I do intend to keep counsel informed.
At this, at the point where it would be, where you've got a response to the RFP and you were ready. At that point, you would come back to council for approval, or, or is this to ask for approval for you to do that?
We don't have, I would preferably, I would like to have, and Christina can weigh in, because we're, we're, we're kind of mixing policy and legal at the same time. I would prefer myself to have an, an RFP drafted for you to look at, but you don't necessarily have to. Wait, I think you may have to approve that because it would oblicate the city for the selected consultant.
So the resolution that was adopted on consent calendar delegated signing authority over the recess. For awarding RFPs to the city manager. So if the RFP were ready to be awarded over the summer, then Seda has delegated that authority to the city manager. Now, there are Roberts Rules of Order where you can recall a decision and reconsider it if, and I can maybe pull up Mary Bridget. And we can figure out that, that Roberts rules, if that's something that the Seda Board wants to, but I also wanted to clarify, it would come back to. We're talking about the Seda Board here and not the City Council, those are different things. This is not a decision on, I want to be clear, this is not a decision on what development will look like in that area. Or what is in the master plan, there is development code that talks through the process of what is in a master plan. This is, this would be work that we would, staff would be working very closely with. The developer team, Edlin and Company and to Chase Mixes. To identify what needs to be done in terms of the planning work. And then seeking and contracting with someone who would do that, so it's a continuation. From a legal perspective, it's a continuation of the process that the Seda Board approved in the RFQ for next steps. But the Seda Board could provide direction to move forward differently, I just wanted to be clear that the. Action you already took this evening would allow the city manager to sort of do that procurement. Over the summer without coming back to the Seda Board. But the product of that procurement in terms of planning decisions that are made, those are things that would come back to the Seda Board. For touchpoints, and I don't know if we've defined yet what those touchpoints would be or when they would be. But I just wanted to be clear on sort of what is and isn't authorized in that resolution.
I, I realize I asked a messy question, but you gave me the answer I was looking for to clarify all that, so thank you.
Merrily, both Leonard and Steve have their hands up over.
Okay, choose one and go first.
Thanks, so I, I don't want to put any words in Nancy's mouth, but I, though the way I understand it. The, the three hundred to four hundred K would be as a fee for the consultant once the consultant selected.
That, that is our estimate of, of what that, the potential impact of that consulting cost could be.
Okay.
So again, we would have to go through an RFP process, that will take some time. So it's, this enables us to start that process instead of waiting for two months and then beginning an RFP process. Because typically when you issue an RFP, you want to give people around a month to respond. Because it is a lot of work for them to, to answer the questions.
Okay, and so, eh, ju- just clarify if you don't mind, in my mind, I'm having trouble getting my head around it. What, what's been going on in phase one, I mean, before we selected the consultant?
Right, so we have the development team identified through the RFQ process. They, we've all been doing some independent work internally to prep up for this RFQ process. So the development team has been doing some outreach with the adjacent property holders. But we, we can't make any kind of. Legal determinations on that, but they're just putting out some, some feelers as to how they want to participate in the development. Would they want to participate in development? How would that take place? So they're doing their due diligence on their side while we prep up our end for releasing RFP. For a consultant to help with master planning.
So if, say, an adjacent property owner decided to build a ballpark, then that might have a, an influence on what we planned.
Yes. It could.
That's all I got.
I, I would say it would, obviously.
Steve?
A year ago, we were talking about Glenwood, and I was pessimistic, said, it's not gonna go anywhere. And you said, or people said, it'll, it'll be different in a year, well, it's a year, and it's not any different. It's just not going anywhere, and we're putting money into it and money into it, and I'm disappointed. I don't know what to do, I'm, I'm mad, I don't understand the process that's going on, I thought we'd selected a potential developer. And now we're, we're going through another three hundred thousand dollars for, I don't know, whatever, but. I'm confused, I don't like what's going on, so, that's it.
Christina?
Yeah, and I apologize, Counselor Mo, I'm not sure if that was a, a question or a, a statement, but I can try to, I can try to provide.
Be vetting.
Okay, I want to make clear though, the developer team is remaining the developer team. The requirement under the Glenwood refinement plan is that the city approve, the city, not the Seda Board, the city approve a master plan before. Before site plan can be approved, so it's the next, the refinement plan is like the highest level. Then the master plan is the next level of planning down that's necessary under the refinement plan. And then like site development plans are the last, and so this is moving from. This is the first time the city will be taking, or Seda would be taking the high level refinement plan into the next phase of actually master planning that. Phase, so, it, and so the planning consultant is not changing. The fact that the city would be, Seda would be hiring a planning consultant to help with that next step does not change the selection or outcome of the RFQ. We're still moving forward with those same parties.
Joe?
I think Counselor Mo's problem is moving forward usually means there's shuttles in the ground, something's getting done. Again, if I may, let me see if I understand this. We chose a developer. There's no obligation that the developer is gonna come up with anything that's financeable, they're just gonna see, they're gonna do their best, correct? I mean, it, it's entirely possible that they'll work their butts off and come up with nothing. We don't know, I'm, I'm asking, that's my first question, is that correct or is that not correct?
I, these projects, I think, don't really ever have guarantees, and that was why the RFQ was so important. Because it was important to pick someone with demonstrated success doing this type of work, and that's about as close to a guarantee as we can get. And I think at the time that you, you know, made the decision to move forward, the board was confident that, that this team provided that. Red requisite experience to be able to develop something that would pencil out, but you're correct.
Yeah, couldn't agree with you more, totally, so we don't know. Now, it seems to me also, we're having the city encumber additional funds. Even though we don't know. To go hand in glove with hopefully something happening. My experience, understanding it's, it's not this sector, but my experience. Is that when you don't know what you're gonna do, you don't issue RFP first, which is request for proposal. And you don't issue an RFQ first, which is request for qualifications. You issue an RFI first, which is a request for information to see the quality. Of the people that might be interested in pursuing something and what they would propose. So I'm curious, why, as it relates to this, we're not looking at an RFI that's, that costs nothing. Where, where vit potential vendors come in and give you all their knowledge for you to whis- whis through. From which you have an informed basis to develop an RFQ or an RFP, so I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so this is not a request for proposal for the planning concept, this is a request for proposal for a planner firm. So we don't need informa- we don't need to ask for information on what a master plan entails. Because our, we would answer that with our own development code. So the step here is seeking a professional planning firm that can take that code. Work with the relevant interested parties, which includes the development team selected in the RFQ. Seda as the owner of the property currently, adjacent property owners. Take that, work with those groups and translate that into planning documents, so not a request for information. I, I'm just not, I'm not sure what information we would be asking for in that process for this specific piece of the work.
Whether I'm in public or private sector, if you ever want to ask me, I'd be happy to answer, and. But we are encumbering money, betting on the comp, correct?
To be expending money on, to develop the master plan work product, which is a necessary piece of. It's necessary planning in terms of uses, keep in mind, this is not a specific market product, so this is not a specific. This is not to the level of detail that you're working on in the Blue McKenzie, for example, this is the level of detail of this. Area on the map will have housing in this density range, and this will have these land use mixes over here. So it's one more level of detail than refinement plan, but it is not to the like specific, the specific level of a site plan. And that's mandatory under the development code, and it would be translatable no matter who is, no matter who is ultimately developing the site. That master plan would be relevant, but it is incurring a necessary expense that needs to be incurred under the development code if this property were to develop.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and how long have we had the refinement plan?
Eleven years. The refinement plan was acknowledged, which means that's, because there were a series of appeals, it was finally acknowledged in twenty fourteen.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sean?
And maybe, so the shovels are on the other side of the master plan, right, Nancy? Okay, so I think I, I, I think I have kind of two points, and I'm, I'm ready to let these guys go and do the work, right? Like, you know, and the reality is, we all want Glenwood to get done, and we want it to do it as quickly as possible. You know, we've got to give the staff some direction and let them actually do, let them actually do the work. Now, with that said, every time, right, like, we've all had our hands in business from, you know, from different, uh, different levels of experience. Every time this comes up, we cannot just keep raking, raking the plan over the coals. We, we kind of have to choose a direction and stick with it, we've never been this far along. I would just encourage everybody to kind of look up to the ninety thousand foot level and keep marching towards the goal. With that said, I think there's a real question that the staff can help us with, that is, hey, can you just put together a gant or something that says? Hey, this is what's coming up, here's the, you know, just keep us at the ninety thousand foot level so that, you know, we understand what's coming down towards us. This kind of RFP, I've got no concerns with.
May speak, this is Nancy.
Yes.
Thank you, this is so awkward, I don't have a raise hand feature in C Hall. First of all, thank you Christina for that overview of procurement, and also, you're correct, Counsel, Commissioner. Let me, you, you're Commissioner and Board Member Bernie, regarding different forms of procurement. And, and in this situation, I've, and I've been involved in all of, an RFI, RFQ, RFP, they all have different applications and uses. I've also been very involved in master planning efforts, and if you'll allow me to digress for just one moment, I'll. Put this back into focus, but when I was working in Clockmouth County, the county has a fifty-seven acre campus. That we retain the purpose, consultants to do the planning work for the campus. And that was a twenty-five year time horizon, just to give you an, an idea of scope and scale. That's adjusted over time, and really what this enables you to do in a master plan is you're, you're taking a geographical area. And you're identifying what you want to do, what you're proposing, and what would be a future application in that area. And you're, and Christine is exactly, exactly right, we already know what the requirements are because we have the refinement plan. What we don't have here in the city is the, is the staffing to be able to do this type of work, we just don't. And it is really a very specialized skill set that you bring into this. Because it involves a lot of projections onto growth and use, and also what are the uses of the land, what are the underlying applications of the land? What, what kind of utilities are served there, so there's a myriad of things that you can look into during a master planning process. So I feel confident that we can tee up a good RFP for people to respond to. I already personally know a few firms that I've worked with in the past that would be able to do this work and that are familiar with our local community. I don't have any predisposition to, to who would be awarded work, but I do know the magnitude of, for the work that will be required to get us there. And yes, we will be turning dirt at the end, but it just takes time.
Thank you, Nancy. Joe, missionary?
Yes, thank you, so I just want to get clear in my head, or other people's heads too, is that we own that land, right? Okay, so Christine, Christine is nodding.
Seda or the city own most of the property, and then we're also working with the adjacent properties, as you know, to maybe participate in that effort.
There you go, and so what we put there is, it's our responsibility, what we put there, and that. The, all the risk is gonna be on the developer. Because they're the ones that are gonna be developing that land, right?
The city would have some risk in the sense that we are working with a development team. And we also, you know, procure, procure the land itself, so we have, you know, had some exposure as far as assembling land. And we're also investing, obviously, in the col- consultant's cost, cost to master plan the land, but that's work that we would retain. So the risk would be in costs that we have incurred to bring this project along to its present state and to its future. Hopeful development.
Right, but they're, but they're, but they're the ones that are gonna be developing the land, right? So that's their, that's their risk, is by their jumping in and saying, okay, we're gonna develop that land. So they've got that risk, and it doesn't get handed over until that development's done, right?
We'll be, we'll be negotiating terms of sort of for disposition of the property, those sort of development agreement terms or purchase and sale agreement terms. And Seda will approve those, and you'll discuss those in executive session, I'm sure thoroughly before that.
Right.
Ink it, you know, for, for that document gets inked. So generally, that's the principle, but there will definitely be nuances and details of where risk is allocated. And that will all come before you for a decision on.
So, but that's still, I mean, I remember the meeting we had, what is, a year and a while back, and, and that's, it's, none of this is really a huge surprise. It's just one of the next steps we need to do.
Right, and it's also very challenging to allocate those risks when we don't have an idea. So we have, it's not a chicken and egg problem, but it's sort of a chicken and egg thing that we get to untangle, and that we don't, we can't determine who's responsible for what. Until we know what infrastructure is needed, we can't determine what infrastructure is needed, until we know what the uses are. You need to know who's at the table to determine what the uses are. And so the master planning work is kind of the way that we start to iteratively figure those parts out. That culminate, that sort of culminates in shovels in the ground and development agreements or purchase and sale agreements inked.
But the still, the city will still own that property until that's such, such time. Then things start to move forward, and so we still have an off-ramp, but, you know. Down the road even, but not that we want one, but I'm just saying is that it's not gonna be something that's going to sink our boat.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so to speak, by the river, so. Thank you, I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor, thank you.
Joe, Bernie?
I just wanted to say again that I ask questions just to see if I can poke holes. And, and the answer is provided. And, and the answer is provided not only satisfying me, but I have eminent confidence in your city manager who forgets that she's also sometimes reporting to the Seda Board. So I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next item.
No other items.
Then we are adjourned. And we are then, I guess, at this point next headed into an executive session of council.
Correct.
On this same link or a different?
No, different link because it's executive session of council.
That's what I thought. So Joe gets to go.
Thank you. I appreciate.